Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Alder?
Here.
Councilmember Ringo?
Here.
Councilmember Greindorff?
Here.
Mayor Phelan?
Here.
President.
All right, and we will take a motion to approve or amend tonight's agenda. Amend or approve? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for March night.
I second it.
A motion to second. Any other comments? Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Greindorff?
Could I add something for the good of the council?
You can.
I would like to add the logo to the good of the council.
All right. Councilmember Alder, you amend your motion to approve as amended?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Blake?
I second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
So we're going to start tonight with a public hearing for cars pre-service and the column property, 19477 St. Francis Boulevard, for interviews permit. Outdoor storage and route servicing, and variants, bathing required on course. Actually, the public hearing is for the variants from the setback. And that would, Liz would have put that in right after our last big meeting. So Lori, do you know that the notices are up to the place?
Yes.
So we will open that public hearing. Do we have anybody in the audience to speak to the variants for the setback? The non-council members? If you were able to observe the P and Z meeting last week? The one question they had there that wasn't prepared for that meeting was the variants. So the two variants and the two IUPs were addressed, and they will be addressed down under the planning and zoning sections around the o'clock. But there was one variance that was not prepared, and that was for the setback. So there was a modification, if you've seen the update from Liz, there's a modification to the setback. And it now is just 20 feet varied from the 100-foot setback. So they're going to come back 80 feet, and that will work for their turnaround and work for their storage. So does the council have any question on that, that variance? And again, that variance criteria is necessary to be able to use that lot with all the wetlands that are on it and the pipelines going through there, to be able to park their vehicles, turn them around, and store materials on there. So it's not an economic situation, it doesn't need the criteria of the variants, the hopeful criteria. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are you hearing me, Mr. Mayor?
We're hearing you.
Right. I just want to say, Paul, I, Councilor Lori, or Central Lori this morning, a concern I have as far as doing the grinding of the trees and dumping logs, that we limit that to just Monday through Friday and not Saturday. So it's not, you know, here with the residents that are rocking and them enjoying their area on Saturday, so.
And we will, we will take that up when we get to the P and Z part of it. But I did talk to Evan Amundson today, and actually, we, he said Monday through Friday, nine to five rather than nine to six, because we do expect residential areas to be going over there. And he said that fits their business model anyway, so nine to five would be what we would vote on later. So he agrees on Monday through Friday, nine to five. It's a good point. Anything else on this, this variant? Saying in hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will vote as a council to move this down to planning and zoning. So I'm in motion to add this to the two variances in the IUP on item eight on the planning and zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve and moving it to the planning and zoning under item eight.
Have a motion?
I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Saying in hearing none, we'll move that forward then. Third item, consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo?
I would second that.
All right, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? Saying in hearing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo?
I would just, three eight, I think this is a carryover from last month, which was in there all those, they're not special meeting minutes, they're just our regular city council meeting minutes.
You got that, Lori? Thank you. All right, so we have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Saying in hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion carries. Four items, saying none. No arguments tonight. So, welcome to the sheriff. If you have met everybody here, this is Councilmember Linda Blake, Councilmember Jason Alders joining us this year, Councilmember Joe Greenberg, Mayor Jeff Phelan, and on the phone here is Councilmember Mary Ringo. Of course, you know our third treasurer, Lori Strike, and our fire chief, Dave Schmidt. So welcome, sheriff. And I don't know if you're doing the honors tonight or?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, absolutely happy to jump in for the record. My name is James Stewart, and it's my honor and privilege to serve as your sheriff in Anoka County, and to be able to be here tonight. Tonight is our 2021 Meet the Deputy Night. And I was thinking, as I was driving up here, it feels like about three weeks ago when we did the 2020 Meet the Deputy Night. And I think that's because we've all been caught up in such a whirlwind adventure of this past year. As, as everyone has been encountering a variety of challenges and struggles, I can say that the sheriff's office is no exception. Across our six divisions and all the multiple specialty units, we've had to modify our, our response protocols and our operations and procedures. And it's been certainly a dynamically challenging year with the COVID changes. But then you throw in the, the civil unrest that we've had around the county as well as our support to the historical riots that occurred down in Minneapolis. And on any given day during that 10-day stretch, we averaged about 90 people that were in support roles down there, so it certainly took its toll as we, we really made sure that our primary objective was keeping Anoka County residents safe and secure. And we did have, again, some of those issues to deal with. And on top of that, the, the anti-law enforcement rhetoric and some of the propaganda that's out there, I'm proud to say that our team continues to rise above that. They continue to show up, they continue to serve, and they continue to shine brightly. We've been, and I've been privileged to be a part of some of the police reform efforts at not just the state level but at the national level. And as we talked about some of the, the directions and things that we should do and model policies and some of those things, as I talked with legislators, it, the message was pretty consistent. We don't have a lot of opposition because most of what's being proposed, the Anoka County Sheriff's Office has been doing for many, many years. And so again, I, I'm proud of our team, I'm proud of the foundation of excellence that is our office. We've always tried to be on the forefront of training and model policies and doing things right. And we continue to strive for that, and you'll meet some of the reasons that I continue to be proud tonight, just a little bit as we meet our team. That'll be some of the folks that are serving Now Then in the coming year. And I guess before I turn it over to Commander Heath, I just push pause. And if you had any questions of me or anything that I might be able to help with while I'm here, I'd be honored to do that.
Well, we, we appreciate, you know, your, your presence in person. We appreciate the opportunity to meet the deputies. But it, it means a lot to us in the partnership that we've had over the years that, you know, to have the sheriff himself come in and present to us.
My honor, thank you.
We thank you, and I, I will say, you know, in light of, you know, it does seem like maybe three weeks ago, nothing else has happened in the past year or so. But when, when riots were happening in Minneapolis, we did have some residents that were concerned. And, and just a, a compliment to Commander Heath, we had just gotten off the phone talking about this when I got a phone call from a resident. And I was able to say, I just talked with the sheriff's department, and we are covered. Here's what's happening. And so the proactive nature, you know, it's, what I appreciate about the relationship is it's not reactive, it's been proactive. And we have some challenges in town here with, with different things that we have shared interest in. And again, the sheriff's department has been excellent partner in that. And, and I, we value as a city because we are fiscally responsible here. So we value our partnership there too because we understand the cost of law enforcement and what wonderful deal we're getting compared to what we could be doing. So thank you for your, your support of our city, and thank you for your, your presence here.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate the, the comments, Mr. Mayor, because we too appreciate the partnership. And we have come a long way, and I know we've stood shoulder to shoulder through a lot of battles, and I, I continue to appreciate that partnership as well, so thank you.
Council, anything, anything you'd like to ask of the sheriff? Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Councilmember Ringo, anything?
I, I would echo Mayor Phelan's comments. We really truly appreciate the deputies and their, the work that they do in Now Then. And I want to, they're going to be down in Minneapolis coming up here. Be safe, as I always want you to be safe, but be extra safe down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have a presence down there with the National Guard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, we, we have been in basically non-stop discussions as part of the planning team, working with the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, State Patrol, and Minneapolis PDE. We've also tragically been balancing the needs of the line three stuff that's going up in the north end, talking with those sheriffs, and trying to make sure we're ready to support our partners whenever and wherever the needs may erupt. We will have a dramatically downsized response compared to what we did last time. I mean, last time it was more of a rapidly evolving, what do we need to do to get, get control of this? Whereas now there's a, a more definitive plan in place that we're going to be in more of a support role rather than, we were in a pretty significant leadership role last time. And so we're going to try to pull back the reins a little bit and make sure that we're, we're support, and that's it.
And for the council's benefit, you know, we, we probably don't review this often enough. We'll, we'll be having discussions on the, the future of the contract here coming up next month. But currently, we have contracted eight hours, seven days a week. That's the equivalent of 1.58 personnel. So we have some physical presence and gentlemen here tonight in our community, eight hours every day. But we also have 24/7 response time. There's a county car that, that travels. If something happens in Now Then, the sheriff's department responds from wherever they're at. We might get a car rolling over from Old Grover and over, and they backfill from there. So it's, it's still typical. If there's an emergency in Now Then, the sheriff's the first one there. Whatever time of day it is. So it's, it's an excellent partnership that way as well, so.
I have one question.
Councilmember Blake?
Do you have a weapon on the force?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we're, one of my goals over the past decade, I can't even believe I'm in my third term, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, was, was a broader diversification. We, we have probably an above-average representation of, of females within our agency. Unfortunately, we're still, I would argue, underrepresented with people of color. But we, just the reality is we continue to struggle, like a lot of law enforcement communities, with, you know, 98%, no offense, guys, of our, of our candidates are typically white males. And so you, you recruit from where you are, but we continue to try to broaden our representation of our communities as well.
I, I would say very extremely qualified female officers as well, or deputies as well. I think a meeting we had here that was quite contentious a number of years back, and the sergeant that came out here was pretty diminutive from our community. And a couple of people needed to be walked out. And they were very large men, and they were very upset. And when she walked them out, a number of guys in the room got up to go help her. I mean, she's in trouble. And, and she was talking to them and had calmed them down, did an amazing job. But she also must have called for backup because a couple of squads showed up too. So these guys came walking back in and said, she's good. There was nothing we could have done, so. We, we appreciate that training too because it was extremely well handled. Something that could have gotten out of hand was handled extremely well. And there was no need in the end for the backup, but it was there. And so we appreciate the, the training that goes in. Everything we have seen is nothing but professional, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to, to your point, I mean, you'll hear some of the bios and their backgrounds here shortly. But I, we, we do work very hard to make sure that we are hiring the best, and that we're providing the best possible training to keep them up to speed because we recognize the difficult situations that our, our team are put into every single day. So we want to make sure that they're ready for whatever the world may throw at them.
Excellent. So, Commander?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. You know, I was thinking while we were sitting here chatting, and this is my favorite council meeting of the year. And the reason is, it's, it's twofold for me. Partly because of the way we do our Meet the Deputy Night here. The council here actually interacts with our deputies and talks to them, and the deputies get up and, and talk with you. But one of the other benefits and, is so you guys get to see who it is who's actually out here doing the work. You get to see me every month and talk to me. We talk sometimes during the month if there's issues that are ongoing. But this is a representation of the men and women that are out here in Now Then 24 hours a day, seven days a week, taking care of the needs of the community. I've told you guys many times, it's not me. I get to, I get to come here, and it's easy for me to talk in a meeting, but these are the people that are, are actually doing the work. One of the benefits, and I bring back and, and try to filter down through the division, the praise that you all send back to our deputies. But I also want them to hear it directly from you. Because it, I get praise from you guys on a, you know, fairly frequent basis about the good job that our staff is doing, and they don't always get an opportunity to hear that. And while it might filter down through the, the division as a, as a nice little atta boy or, or atta girl, nice job, to hear some of the support and the praise that, that this council and this city in particular sends their way, I think is very beneficial. So I go back to, this is my favorite meeting of the, of the year for that reason. So just in the interest of, of letting Councilmember Alder's know my history, this is my 17th year with the sheriff's office, and I've got 12 years with other law enforcement agencies around the state. So I'm, I'm a little bit older in this profession. I've worked different profession, different positions, all the way from patrol deputy, done crime scene investigation, was a detective, was a sergeant, lieutenant, and now a commander. Spent time on our SWAT team as a crisis negotiator, and done field training, and many of the other jobs that this profession has to offer, and have truly enjoyed them. So I have a varied background, but anybody that knows me knows that Anoka County is my home. And, and this is where I want to be. And it's partly because some of the things that the sheriff has talked about in the way this organization's always presented itself to the community and how it's handled itself in the profession. And so this is, this will be where I retire from as well. So that's a little bit of background on me. I've, and I've been the liaison, I think this is my seventh year here in Now Then as your liaison. So, and I've enjoyed that time as well. I've got to develop some good relationships with the council and, and feel like you guys have a, have someone you can reach out to and talk to at any time if there's an issue. So with that said, I want to introduce the deputies that are here. And then, I guess unless, Mayor, if you or any of the council members had any questions for me?
So you, so you guys serve eight, seven other cities besides Now Then directly?
Seven additionally total, correct, as the primary.
Right. So are you the liaison for all eight cities, just?
Just Now Then.
Just Now Then.
One of our command staff members is assigned to each of the other contracts.
Oh, really? I bet you're at home.
What is a SWAT team crisis commander? That sounds super cool, so.
Crisis negotiator. Simple, simple, simply put, my job was to do some planning things for the team, but then also to do crisis negotiations, people, people that are in crisis or barricaded subjects or anything like that, where they needed somebody to talk to a person who the team needed to engage with or other law enforcement did. That would be my, was my job.
Awesome.
At one point.
So when we had Night to Unite a number of years ago, when, when Commander was still part of that unit, he would pull out his gear and let the kids try it on. And I don't know how you move in that stuff, but. The kids would just kind of stand there like, okay, what do I do now?
Well, thankfully, as a negotiator, I didn't have to move too much, too fast, too far, so.
Excellent. All right.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll kind of forego my normal report for the month because I don't want to bore you guys with anything. But the, I know the calls for service numbers were sent out this month. If anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I can try to answer them.
I will say it's nice to have now, the calls heard down about 50 from last month, so.
Yes, it was a nice month. But for the, for tonight, I just wanted to introduce the deputies. And if you guys have any questions for them, I'll have them stand up, and they were going to give just their, their information and a brief bio on themselves. And if you or the council has any questions, Mayor, that would be fine, they're willing to answer.
Hopefully prepared them, but what I'd like to hear is, in light of, of all the pushback on, on law enforcement and defund the police and the negative things that have happened this year, what's the best part about your, your choice, your career choice? And what, what's going well, and then why do you like it? If you can share that, we'd appreciate that, so.
Well, and, and I won't make them do anything that I won't do, so I'll help answer that question. I'll start. I can tell you that for me, it's just service. And none of the rhetoric or anything that we've heard in the public from small minority parts of the public has deterred my desire to want to serve people. That doesn't mean I'm still at the same place I was 29 years ago as a, as a young officer, but I still have a desire to serve and to help people. And I, and I would be willing to bet, very similarly, most law enforcement officers will tell you the same thing, that it hasn't diminished. It doesn't mean it's easy in the face of the things we hear and see every day, but that desire is still there. And we do know that in dealing with citizens, that there is a lot of support out there for us. We get support from people, you know, regularly telling us, thank you for what you're doing. Sometimes we would like that support to be a bit, be a little bit louder so we could see that on the news versus some of the negative stuff. But we'll take it when we can get it. But for me, again, it's still the desire to serve, and that won't waver with me.
And as a commander now, you're, you're enjoying it still as much as when you were?
Yes.
He did hesitate there a little, Mr. Sheriff. I really like my boss. I, I did say that beforehand. They can't answer. I've got a great boss, and I work for a great city. I want something besides that.
Yeah, but it's, in my current role, it's very different. I don't have to put up daily with, and, and deal with some of the things daily that the men and women in uniform out on the street do. It's just, it's very different. I, I work in an office the majority of the time and, and plan and do all those things that need to be done inside to help make the organization run. But I still enjoy my job. It's just different, and it's finding different satisfaction. And I might not be serving the public directly in my career right now, but if I do my job well and I keep doing what I'm supposed to be doing, working on projects and all the things that I do, my hope is that it helps the men and women out on the street and in our jail facility do their job to continue to serve the actual public. So I have to find a different way of doing the same thing.
Thank you. Thanks for doing it.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Well, with us here tonight and the real stars of the show, with me tonight are Deputy Jordan Abler, Deputy Jesse Cutler and his partner Diesel, and Sergeant Mike Slavik. So to start, I think we'll start with you, Jordan, just since you're on the outside.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilman. My name is Jordan Abler. I grew up in Anoka, I, I was born and raised in the city of Anoka and spent first 21 years of my life here. Twenty years and I joined the Marine Corps, spent about six years there as a military police officer. Sent over to Africa twice, the first time to duty in support of Operation Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom, and then a second time to Morocco to help train their army and train with them and kind of be the salesman, but hey, buy our stuff. And then when I finished that, finished my six years with the, with the Marine Corps, I moved to Lakewood, Colorado, and served as a police officer out there for about eight years. I finished my schooling here in Minnesota at Northwestern College in Roseville. A major in criminal justice and psychology and a minor in biblical studies. Took that and went to Colorado with my, with my wife and went through the academy at Lakewood Police Department out there for about 20, 22 weeks. Over all the ins and outs of policing and industry going right away. Had our first kid out there, and then I've had three children out there, two girls and a boy. Spent eight years out there, like I said. First six years were in patrol, and then I moved to an investigation spot, primarily investigating property crimes. And then after about eight years out there, it was time to move home, be closer to family with our kids and all that, so we moved back. And I really felt a calling to come back home, and the sheriff's office was pretty much, not the only option, but the only place I really felt called to go. I grew up around here, and I love serving the citizens of the communities around here. And it helps to have the connections around here too. Very happy to be working for a great office, and, I'm sorry, I've been at the sheriff's office for just under a year. And like Commander said, service, I, I really enjoy serving, serving people. I like, as difficult as people can be sometimes, I still appreciate it. For all the people who are naysayers, there's a lot, there's a lot more who are supportive, and, and that's why I continue to do it.
So are you related to other well-known Ablers in Anoka?
Uh, maybe.
Depends on which ones, huh?
My dad is a Jilleyer.
I can see it in the eyes.
I have a mascot, and he talks just like that.
Shorter hair, but.
It's not way good, too.
Well, we're glad you came back to the area, yeah.
I think there were some openings in Minneapolis.
Was there?
I think there were some openings in Minneapolis.
Uh, I'm sure there was.
We're not giving them up, Mr. Mayor.
No, well, thank you very much, and we appreciate it. So, so what do you like best about what you're doing right now?
Uh, it's the people. I mean, if, when I get to go out and serve people and just seeing the look on their face of, you know what, I was having such a hard time, but thank you for, for the help.
Great.
Thank you, and thank you for, for being there. It is, you know, it's, it's something that if, if you don't have an emergency in your own life, in your own home, in your own vehicle, and I think about this with fires too, with our fire department, most of us have no idea what you guys do. And we see a squad car once in a while, and if you, if you're sitting on the shoulder of the road, we probably mumble something under our breath, but, but I tell you what, when I've been to an, an accident scene or a fire, and I see the professionals that are there, it, it's incredible how reassuring that is and, and the calm demeanor that generally is, is, is brought to the scene. it, it's incredible how reassuring that is and, and the calm demeanor that generally is, is, is brought to the scene. It's got to be tough for you guys, but the professional service you provide is wonderful for our community. And when those, those of us that have had need of it can really greatly appreciate it. Those that don't should be glad that they, they haven't had need of your services yet. Thank you for being there. Yeah, thank you for your service, thank you, Jordan.
Yes, thank you.
Jesse, are you here? Thank you guys for having us. My name is Deputy Jesse Cutler, I obviously work here in the Sheriff's Office. I worked at the Sheriff's Office for eight years and I started in our jail and then I obviously got a job up here on patrol. I've been on patrol here for six years. More notably with him, I got him three years ago and we've been on patrol ever since. We completed a 16-week K-9 school. He's dual certified in narcotics and tracking and criminal apprehension. Further back in my life, I got my law enforcement, I started a law enforcement career rather with the city of Fridley. And one of the reasons why I like to serve is because I was headed in a, a pretty bad direction in life as a youth and I had a piece of respect and helped me along the way. And I live to return the favor to, to people that I do with that are either in crisis or struggling in life. So that's one of the reasons why I like to be up here. And I'm thankful for the sheriff to provide me with a job and especially to provide me with him to be able to serve this community and the communities that we serve, so.
And we have nice spaces for Diesel to run when he needs to stretch.
Yeah, 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 we often come out here after, obviously, we do work enforcement actions and stuff out here, but one of the reasons why I like to come out here to the city of Malvin is just to decompress and allow him to decompress and have fun and be a dog, so.
Does he live at, at home with you?
Yes, he does, yep, so he stays with me 24/7. He has an indoor/outdoor kennel set up, so in the summertime or the warmer months, he's outside. He has a heated doghouse and stuff like that. And then in the winter time, he comes inside and he has a kennel downstairs in my basement.
Okay. Now he's, I was asking, you're commanding officer, if you, people don't go up and pet him and things like that, right?
Uh, they can, as long as he's out of the building near me. He's, he's pretty good at what we call a K-9, about flipping the switch, so he has the ability to be very, very social. That's not the first things that, that we look for in these dogs. So he can, he can, if I let him go, he'll walk around the entire room, greet everybody.
We were having a tug of war earlier, so.
Yeah, he doesn't have the issues greeting people and dealing with people, but as soon as I tell him to do so, it's a, it's a different mindset, so.
Okay.
You, you don't want to be on the other end of that command.
No, but he looks pretty sweet to me.
At the Heritage Festival, we've had some demos and the commander's volunteered to be the, the perpetrator. You want to make sure you have the suit on if you're going to volunteer to be the perpetrator.
Yeah, yeah, he's very good at what he does.
How many K-9 units do you have?
Uh, we currently have four.
You have four?
Yep. Yep, and they're all dual certified for, for narcotics and criminal apprehension. So currently we use the National Police Can Association as our, our standard or metric of testing. And we all serve, obviously, certified in evidence last year. COVID made that fun because it was, it was like put on and not put on and then put on. That's what we certify in.
How long does it take a dog to go from not trained to trained up? Is it a year process or three years or?
Uh, typically, it depends on what, what the agencies specifically are looking for. But like for the Sheriff's Office, we usually get dogs that are at least a little bit pre-trained. And then, so he came from the Czech Republic. And when he came over here, he had a little bit of training and obedience and, and a small amount of criminal apprehension. And then the course that we went through was 16 weeks, extended to 18 weeks because some of the dogs weren't able to keep up. But typically, it's about that time. And, and it's extensive training. It's, it's anywhere from, from eight to 16 hours a day.
Why do you have to go to the Czech Republic? Can they breed dogs like that here?
Uh, yes and no. Uh, yes and no, they do. Some, some trainers get their dogs from the United States. One of the reasons why we don't, with the Sheriff's Office and other agencies in our county that don't do that is because there's issues with bloodlines. And, and we want the dog to be able to do the job without having any medical problems. If that makes sense? So that's one of the reasons why we choose the dogs from overseas because their bloodlines are, are a lot better and they don't have issues with, with medical problems or anything like that, so.
Okay.
What's a typical service term for, for a dog like this?
It depends, um, it depends upon if they have any medical issues or anything like that, but typically the, the shepherds will last anywhere between six to 10 years and the male animals will last a little bit longer. Sometimes some agencies can, can let go at 12 years old, I've seen that. But usually we don't, we don't like to have them out, out in the street past, past 10 years. Just to give them a little bit of time to, to retire and rest. Because it's, it's, it's just as stressful for them as it is for us because obviously he's performing a really job, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I have a question for the K-9 officer. Does the, Nova County Sheriff's Office have assistance of a, of a foundation for their K-9? I know when I was in Minneapolis, we had a foundation and they helped with, in different, many different facets of the program. And I'm just wondering if Nova County has that availability?
Uh, to answer your question, we actually use a multifaceted approach for foundations. The office will, will generally seek out public interaction for those funds if we need them or other resources, like he had a bulletproof and staffed vest that was donated by a foundation out of California. But we use multiple foundations that, that are donating these, either these products or toys or food or sometimes monetary funds, things like that, so. There's not one set foundation that we use, but if there are people in the public that are interested in that and certainly you can contact the sheriff or the commanders of the divisions and they'd be able to set you up with, with the proper resources for that.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Yep, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers? My name is Michael Slavik. I've been with the Sheriff's Office for 21 years. I did 13 years in the jail, hard time, and.
Which side of the jail?
Depends on the day. Worked pretty much every shift and opportunity that I could there. Ranked up to sergeant while I was there and did a 12 weeks spent as interim lieutenant. Shortly after that, I made the move to the license side of things and I worked as a patrol deputy on various cities throughout the county for six years. Then I moved to investigations, was there for about eight months. Working some of our lower level crimes, a lot of property crimes and some were lower level persons crimes, so lower level assaults and, and things of that nature. Then I was promoted up to sergeant in the middle of 2019 and I've been serving in that capacity since. Held multiple roles in the office such as youth enforcement instructor, hazer instructor, and a bunch of other things that makes the office move in the background. But my happiest time has been spent on patrol and I'm happy to still be serving in that capacity now as a, as a sergeant.
And Malvin has been a reasonable place to serve?
Malvin has been a very reasonable place to serve. I spent a lot of my, my first few years out here over in Lakewood, so the east side of the county, about the same size as Malvin. So I, I love smaller cities like that or someone with a township, like the same general feeling. It's a lot easier to get to know the citizens in the, the smaller cities because there just isn't the call volume, so I'm not running call to call to call to call all day. I can take the time and meet with the citizens, get to know them. And of course, when you have that public interaction and that that relationship with the citizens of a city or a township, things get reported to you, excuse me, things get reported to you in a much better fashion. And I think the community as a whole feels more comfortable talking to you about problems that go on out of the city, which is a great help to us. That's, that's the only way we can get our job done and most, most of, technically, I have that relationship with the, the citizens of, you know, whatever community we're serving in at that time. Because then we can address the problems for them or at least do our best to try.
How are the relationships with the business owners here?
Well, working night shift, it's a little difficult for me to establish those relationships. I've worked only night shift since I've been promoted to sergeant. So the interaction we've had with your bar owners and the patrons there has been good and bad, kind of again, what side you're on. But, you know, we've, we've been able to help them out whenever they called. And I know my team and I, we do our, our extra patrols throughout the night, making sure that all your business districts are, you know, at least safe and sound or doing the best we can to make sure that they're safe and sound and not being burglarized. And every once in a while, and we don't expect to find anybody out here, but every once in a while, someone will be at work early or something and kind of surprises us. But it's always good to, for us to, to meet those people, always an employer or a business owner, at least that's what I spend the summer.
What's the difference if you're in, you said you worked in the jail for 13 years part-time? Is it a different requirements if you work in the jail versus patrol? It is a different?
It is. So in the jail, that is a, a non-licensed position. So basically I had, I had no schooling, I had my high school diploma. I began in the jail.
I got you.
My intent and goal was always to become a licensed police officer, but the training and opportunities that presented itself for me in the jail were, were fun and awesome. And I was a, a young kid at the time and I really enjoyed my time in the jail. So I took advantage of that and then slowly started completing school and eventually got through school in 2009. And then I was promoted to sergeant, I think, two days after I finished school. So I wanted to stay in the jail for a little while and, and see how I was as a sergeant in, in a leadership role, so. Took a little bit longer to get out to the licensed side, but my time in the jail was definitely well spent and definitely helped prepare me for my time out here, especially communicating with people, you know, with those who are under the influence and have those difficult conversations with people and they don't want to hear it.
Good for you.
Yes.
I'd say one of the things that's impressed me and Commander Heath has reported on this a number of times in our monthly meetings, is I look through the reports that, that the office provides to us, how often we see a deputy recognize this person shouldn't be driving. Recognize this person from another incident, recognize this from somebody else, somewhere else in the county. And that, that's always amazed me to, you see somebody driving by and say, I know who that is and they don't have a license, so I know who that is and they shouldn't be where they're at right now. It's a little scary to think that you, you know the ne'er-do-wells that well, but I'm grateful that you do, so. But it's always impresses me when I see that in a reporter, hear it from the commander, that, yeah, they, they knew something wasn't right here and they checked it out and fixed it, so.
As, I can't speak for, for everyone, but I can certainly speak for, for some of our deputies. The majority of them actually were. The longer we're in this career, the, the more things you kind of forget from school, like E equals MC squared and your favorite song here, except everything. But I can tell you who lives in a specific house, the cars that they drive, who they're dating, you know, what they're, if they're revoked or suspended, if they have warrants, their sort of history. That's, I think, what makes, you know, a good deputy out here is, is knowing your problem people, knowing the people that are victimizing the citizens of the city and keeping tabs on them and, and, you know, enforcing laws when, when we see them up and about in public and seeing what they're up and about up to because it's usually not good.
Well, we do greatly appreciate it, and again, as I told the sheriff.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate the partnership and we appreciate the boots on the ground out here, so. Yeah, thanks for your service, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Michael.
On behalf of the citizens of Malvin, thank you, gentlemen, for your service to our communities.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
And, and again, pass it on to your, your peers too, that we, we are very grateful out here and we appreciate it. And we love our law enforcement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, anything else?
Anything else for us?
No, sir.
Now you get to go out and patrol.
Not me, I get to go home.
He's lit right.
Thank you, team. Thank you all.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thank you for having us.
Yes, thanks for coming.
All right. Chief Schmidt, top that.
I'll do my best.
So, so for, for everybody here, I think you introduced yourself, no, I am, but this is our, our fire chief, Dave Schmidt.
Yep.
So Joe, who was with us at the workshop last week, this is his boss. Uh, he's a fire chief in, in St. Francis as well. And so you've met everybody here, chief?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm a council member of Joel Greenberg.
And I'm a council member of Linda Blake.
And Councilmember Jason Alders. And then I don't know if you've met Councilmember Rainville, but she's on the phone here, so.
I think we met Councilmember Rainville at the initial preparation.
Okay, that's right, you did.
Mayor Malvin, before you add a couple requests, the time has come through many hours of hard work and meetings to really start to get this started by the pickup. The two actions before you tonight, the first one being formal city approval for the policies pertaining to the firefighter. In the policies, we'll find a pretty industry standard template which calls out actions requiring the standards for the firefighters to action in higher levels in the city of Malvin. One of the issues that is important for you to note is in anticipation of an upcoming $15 minimum wage who, if any of you are paid attention as I am, very likely to happen in the next few years, we did adjust a scale, a wage scale for our firefighters that would be above that $15 minimum wage. That will provide very unique challenges for part-time fire departments in the future for a native dependent for part-time work. And we want to make sure that we have a salary package that was attractive or someone who can continue to serve as a part-time firefighter. With that, I know it's a lengthy document and Assistant Chief Ward was here to do the initial presentation on Thursday. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have regarding the policies.
Councilmember Rainville, anything on the policies?
No, thank you for checking that you got. They're very well prepared.
Yes.
All right, anybody else? Seeing and hearing none. Anything else you'd like to say on that, chief?
No additional questions. I would be very pleased to have this approved. We are going to meet with the firefighters that are currently assigned to Station 3 tomorrow night at 5:30. This document will be sent to them pending the approval tonight, so they will hopefully have an opportunity to at least get their eyes on it and we will be there to answer any questions for staff tomorrow night as well.
All right, I accept a motion to approve the policies as presented by the chief.
That's second best?
All right.
Are you, are you looking for a motion?
Looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the policies for the Malvin Fire Department.
Oh, second best?
A motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. The second task for you tonight is approval of the hiring of firefighters transferring or transitioning from warranty and embarking on a hiring process to formally hire those employees as the city of Malvin employees. We do anticipate that this process will require an application, criminal background check, a psychological exam and a medical check, which are, which are all industry standards for the position of firefighter. We do anticipate that all of the funding will come out of the existing approved Fire Department budget for 2021. We do have some ability in talking with the psychological evaluation company and the medical firm to come and do some of these evaluations on site to make it a little bit more easy for the firefighters. bit more easy for the firefighters to schedule their life around. I know these can sometimes be hindrance in our personal lives, especially with full-time jobs, trying to get down to different facilities to go through this testing, but we are trying to transition as quickly as we can. And we anticipate that this process hopefully will be wrapping up within the first season of April, and we will be able to go live with the Now Then Fire Department shortly thereafter. I would be happy to answer any questions about the hiring process.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Blake.
Are we saying that there'll just be a transition, that all firefighters from the Ramsey Department that want to transfer over to Now Then, they'll be automatically hired?
They will be automatically hired contingent on their successful passing of a criminal background check, psychological exam, and a medical evaluation.
Okay.
So they, there will be a process?
Okay, just wondering.
Yep, and we would anticipate bringing back for formal approval those that we actually hire to the April council meeting.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Rainville?
If there were any other questions, I would move the approval to hire the firefighters to begin that process of transitioning firefighters from the City of Ramsey to the City of Now Then Fire Department.
I'll second it. And a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I just, I, I, I'm pleased to see this process moving forward. It was, it, it, it's taken us a time, but it's being done correctly. And to do things correctly and do things in the manner that government does things, it, it does take a long time. So I appreciate everyone's effort and really grateful to see this moving forward. And then, I just decided, I'd like to thank the chief and the assistant chief for their updates, that they've been sending to Laurie that's come on to council. It's very helpful to get those, it's very interesting, and council has an idea then of what is actually happening, and what our firefighters, potential firefighters are being told, so thank you for voting.
Yes, it's, it's been a long process, it's over a year now, and I appreciate the partnership that's developing here, the patience that the St. Francis team has, has had in getting through this. One of the biggest things we've been struggling with or, or working through has been the relief association, the pension monies that transfer over from Ramsey, trying to figure out something that's equitable for and enticing for those people that might want to join Now Then, and then also making it legal through the legislative process. So we have a committee hearing next Monday, and hopefully that will go well and, and we'll, we'll have gotten over our, one of our last major hurdles here, so. It is exciting to, to be saying we can have a Now Then Fire Department potential here in April, early April, so. Thank you, Chief Schmidt, for that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Anything else? Okay, seeing and hearing nothing else, we will vote on the motion. All those that, the motion to authorize the hiring firefighters through the transition, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
And we had one other thing, you know, we, we put an addition on the fire station here, while the chief's here, we just want to touch base on, that addition's getting completed now, and that was CARES money that has paid for that to this point. But there's a realization that there's certain things we couldn't cover under CARES money. There's some appliances for the little kitchenette in there, installing the, the actual equipment that needs to be installed, the lockers and, and such. And if you've ever been in the fire station bathroom, that building was originally a, a three-bay maintenance garage, and that bathroom is the original to the three-bay maintenance garage from many, many years ago. Very poorly lit, the wiring's not up to code, the plumbing's not up to code, and so there's a recommendation to, since we're bringing the, the whole building up to code and, and starting fresher with our own fire department, that there be some authorization for the chief to finalize that, that piece of it that wasn't covered under the CARES money. We discussed this briefly with Assistant Chief Lawrence last week, but what I would like to propose is that the chief and Laurie figure out where the monies come from in the budget, but that we authorize the monies to get that final portion of this done. Right now, it's estimated to be about $15,000 to do that. But I would, I would move that we authorize that pending Laurie and Chief Schmidt finding the appropriate spot in the budget for those funds. So I would move to authorize up to $15,000 for that purpose.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Councilmember Rainville?
I'm sorry, you, you cut out.
So I'm asking for discussion, we have a motion and a second.
Motion, second, yes.
All right. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I, I don't know if I spaced it out, did we vote on the policies?
Yes.
Yes.
You spaced it out, Mary.
Okay, I remember the motion being made seconded, I just don't remember the vote. All right, thank you.
Yes, we voted, so. All right. Thank you, chief. You're welcome, welcome to stay, or if you want to leave, we, we understand that too, so.
I got one to pick up from the super room here shortly, so. I have three kids and they all play hockey, so.
You better go.
We work around the hockey area, so.
That's right.
And you appreciate your time tonight, and you appreciate your support. One of the things that we have been very, very steadfast with the potential staff transitioning over is the amount of incredible support that lies with this council, and it's very much appreciated. This has been, as many of you know, a very difficult process for staff. Nobody had asked for this, and it's at nobody's fault, but this is the reality of the world that we're living in. The fact that we're moving this thing forward is a huge relief for everybody. We've spent a lot of time and energy on this, and we will continue to spend as much time and energy on the success of this program as we need to. Myself and Assistant Chief Lawrence and the St. Francis team is fully committed, and we do really appreciate your support. This is going to be a long process to get this up and running. It's going to be a relatively expensive process to get this up and running, and your support has been incredible, and we look forward to working, working with everybody to get this thing to the point that it needs to be where we all can be proud of the Fire Department. So thank you.
So the 20 employees that you're going to fire?
Yes.
Of course, 20, so the previous training that they have is that they need to do additional training for the new requirements?
So there, for the folks that are transitioning over?
Yep.
There will not be initial firefighter training. They're all certified firefighters, they're all certified in some capacity on the medical side or EMS side.
Okay.
When we get to the point of adding to staff?
Okay.
Which will likely happen this summer, we want to give the community some time to understand what's happening, get them excited about having their own fire department, and bring people in. One of the challenges that we run into is, Anoka County runs their own fire academy, and they typically have a spring and a fall start time. The spring start time actually begins next week on Tuesday. So to go through this pre-employment process for brand-new employees with no experience, get them through every hoop that we need to jump through, and then get them into an academy, it's a very short timetable, and quite frankly, it's just not going to work.
Right.
The days of hiring your neighbors onto the Fire Department, we'll get them training when we can, or have been over in my 25 years in the, in the fire service, haven't really existed. So our expectations are to create a professional Fire Department here, and I don't mean professional by full-time paid, I mean professional and professionally trained, and they act professionally when they're on the street, and they're accountable to professional standards.
Okay.
And that training is really where we kick that off. So we will do a full recruitment this summer. We did just interview in St. Francis, we did have a Now Then resident that applied to St. Francis, we did not hire them in St. Francis, we are reserving them for Now Then. So there is interest that we are garnering, Laurie actually forwarded me a contact as well, so word is getting out, and I believe that we will be able to hire a strong group again this summer and capture that fall academy for them to participate in.
The, right now, there's, I think, 14 people that are assigned to Station Three.
Correct.
Presuming that they all passed the, the process, the interview process, and, and all are interested in coming in. There is training there, we, we knew coming in that we would be counting on what's called mutual aid or auto aid, so the chief's been looking at that, so that when calls go out, we will be covered. Because right now, when, when a structure fire goes out, all three stations in Ramsey show up. That won't be automatic now, so we'll set up auto aid agreements so that that type of thing, when there's a structure fire, will be, there will be a response while we get the, the department built up. So we do, did know that, and so the chief's been working with the neighboring chiefs to make sure that we're covered where we need to be, and that we can provide service to others where, where we can, so. We, it'll be, still a process to get it all finished, but it's, it's going really well right now, so.
And there'll be bumps in the road, to be sure. We're committed to working through each and every one of those to the highest degree possible, but we will run to, run into pinch points as we go. The key is for all of us to remain flexible, to keep that communication going, so we understand where we're at and where the next mission will take us, so.
And it does appear that there's, there's a great, great relief from the firefighters themselves over the, the lack of communication that was available, or the lack of coordination and communication that they were experiencing over this past year. And now they've had regular meetings, and they've had their questions answered, and obviously, one of the biggest things is what was happening to their pension monies. Now they've got answers to those and can see we're this close. Everything I'm hearing is, is, everybody's much calmer and, and positive about what's going on, so.
I would agree.
All right?
Excellent, thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, move on to planning and zoning. So we kind of, we're backwards here, our, on our agenda here, the public hearing is actually what we're doing right now, the two interim use permits, and the two variances, now three variances. So if you see item A, 7A, that's what we, we did back on the, the public hearing, was the variance, outdoor storage of the 20-foot variance from the buffer setback. So we have before us the findings of fact, and as, as Ed said earlier, the variance from city code 11-4-17M to allow required 100-foot buffer yard to reduce slightly to an 80-foot buffer yard, that was our public hearing, so that would be included in this motion. The other item would be on page four, item six. Shipping or grinding of tree stumps, logs, or brush shall only be permitted on-site, Monday through Friday, once per month, to minimize noise concerns and shall be performed during the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That was brought up to, to Evan, and he was fine with that, because that's typical business hours. So other than that, the findings of fact as presented to us should cover what was recommended by the planning and zoning, in addition to the variance we went through tonight, so. Do we have a motion to move that forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning and zoning's recommendations with the adjustment on item number six for core hours.
And the inclusion of the variance approved tonight.
Correct.
All right, we have a motion?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Motion carries. Awesome. Good business. All right, lestaco. We've always said lestaco, what do you guys say? Lestaco? Liz was saying lystaco, and I thought, I never heard that before, so.
And we're always told to say lestaco, so that's what we're doing.
That's what you're going with, huh?
Yeah, that's what we're calling them, yeah.
All right. Well, I figured I heard it from, from Orville, so I figured he must know, so.
Well, definitely, yeah.
All right, so again, we have a, a long process here that we finally got through at planning and zoning. I, I think it's very throwing complete now, everybody's happy, and planning and zoning was happy, so we have it before us. I would accept a motion to approve the findings presented from planning and zoning and Planner Stockman. Recommendations to approve.
I think we should approve the lestaco.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I, I hope that we approve the request for the four block luminaries flat, final plant, including the 12 blocks for future street extensions, sub-division, and the CUP to offer deferals, street construction requirements, as outlined in the findings of fact presented by our city planner and dated as of today.
Councilmember Greenberg, would you like to second that?
I'd like to second that.
Poor Greenberg, finally makes a motion, can't even get it out.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your patience.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Good eye, lestaco's.
Good night. Councilmember Rainville?
There's a little bit of a delay, so did I step on, help another Greenberg's toes? If I did, I...
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
You're good.
He's had big toes, Mary.
All right, sorry about that.
All right, snow removal. We have this wonderful graphic, I, I appreciate that. That makes it so much more clear and evident, and it's pretty straightforward, is it against the law to push snow across the road? Minnesota State statute. So with that, I would accept a motion to approve the updated ordinance amending chapter five of the Now Then City Code relating to on-street parking requirements and snow removal, ordinance number 2020-04.
Did you make that motion?
No, I'm accepting a motion for that.
Okay, I vote, but do you want to make the motion? Why don't you, Mr. Greenberg? Please, this is your work.
I'm looking at the paper, but I don't know if it's the right one.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we accept ordinance number 2020-04, and ordinance amending chapter five of the Now Then City Code relating to on-street parking requirements and snow removal.
With this great, with this great diagram?
Yes, with the great, great graphic.
I will second that motion, because now it seems to be very clear to our eyeballs what all the text means.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have discussion?
Not anymore.
Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the amended draft here, ordinance 2020-04, with the wonderful graphics, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Let's jump on. All right, so next would be the, the planning and zoning had asked that the council discuss self-storage facilities. We just got... through the materials, and come back with a recommendation in our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, we could direct, uh, Lori, um, to see if the league can provide us any additional information on the issue of storage units and what other cities are doing, or she could reach out to her, uh, I know she's been meet with the court, uh, if she could reach out to that group to see what it is other cities are doing.
It'd actually probably be appropriate for her to reach out to other, uh, administrators, because they would, they would know more than probably the clerks, but you'd be-
Yeah, true, yeah.
Could you be able to fit that in, Lori?
Yes.
All right, so as, as part of that motion, we would have, uh, in the table, and we would also have Lori reach out to administrators in the league to see what other information can be provided before our next meeting.
Okay.
All right, with that-
So what's the, uh, so what's the expectation for Lori for next meeting, then?
She, before our next meeting, she will, before our next work session, she will have information from the league and any other pertinent information she has from her counterparts, uh, and communities around us as to what they're doing in regards to, uh, public storage facilities.
The concern, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
The concerns are, uh, do we limit the amount, or do, you know, uh, because this is a, um, this is an area where stor-, it's easy to do storage units, you don't have to have plumbing, and you don't have to have internet, and all the things that cause problems for businesses to come here, so, um, so we're, we're anticipating this could be an issue in the future.
I think the question, the reason it came up at, at, uh, planning and zoning, because one of the commissioners was aware that other cities are starting to investigate-
How many?
-how much they want, and what it does to the rest of their commercial district, because again, um, it's, it's a static situation, you're not bringing in other revenue typically. So they want at least to have that discussion before all of our commercial area was used up for that purpose.
Yeah.
Um, is there something we want to do before it's too late? The other thing that we've talked about before is, is like businesses, um, we've talked about restaurants, bars, types of things, being a certain distance from each other, so you don't have such an accumulation or concentration. So I think it's, it's trying to be proactive, saying what's, what's a reasonable thing to do before it's forced upon us. And so I think it's, it was simply asking the question, should we be paying attention to this now rather than later when we don't have a choice?
Right.
So we're investigating at this point. I don't think anybody's proposing anything, because we just, we don't have information yet, so. Any other questions?
So Lori, you're good with that?
Councilmember Alders? Did you, did you have a? All right. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to table and have Lori get additional information, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, at our work session, we had, uh, two habitation issues. Um, I see information on one here, um, Lori, do you know if there's anything on the second one on the agenda here?
I do not see any additional information than this.
Okay, so we will deal with the one-nine-one-one-one Cleary Road, and we're still waiting to hear what's going on on five-two-seven-oh-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine. We won't be able to act on that one tonight, but we do have a resolution in front of us, uh, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Dash Ten.
What did I do there?
Twenty Twenty-One Dash Ten, Twenty Twenty-One Dash Ten. Lori, this was still Twenty Twenty Dash Oh Four, because it started last year?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, so we have the Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Dash Ten, um, regarding illegal occupancy of a pole shed. So you, you see the, uh, the background information was presented to us, with photos and details.
Yep.
Um, I'll accept a motion regarding the Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Dash Ten.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move that we approve our Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Dash Ten, requiring the occupancy of the accessory building at one-nine-one-one-one Cleary Road, keep using the building as a residence through the health and safety reasons, including no necessary violation of the State Building Code, Honored Before April Twenty-Second, Twenty Twenty-One, subject to the findings and conditions outlined with, uh, by our planner.
We have a motion. We have a second. Second, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Who, who seconded that?
Councilmember Greenberg, sorry.
I'm sorry, who?
Councilmember Greenberg.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next in the item, IUPs, CUPs. We talked at the work session that we would pick, uh, twenty of the most likely to be cleared up quickly, and start with those. Um, I'm not sure how we intended on doing that. Do you remember, Lori?
I think this council was going to take a look at the residents that they were aware of, that they knew if they were still in business or not, right after him. Yeah, there wasn't-
So, so what I, what I would recommend then is, is that we, uh, Councilmember Rainville, are you, uh, willing to meet with Planner Stockman on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I can provide her what I have already-
Okay.
-as far as knowing what ones, uh, that are currently listed as IUPs or CUPs, um, that, that it's all owners and they're not doing anything of the likeness of what the IUP or CUP was. Like, forward that to them. She doesn't have questions, then she can let me know.
All right, I'd do that, and then I would be willing, once she gets your document, to meet with her at her office and, uh, and go through that list and pick out twenty of them to, if that's amenable to the council.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, you're cutting out, I'm sorry.
So you send yours, you send yours in to Lori, she'll get it to Liz, and once Liz has that, and I'm willing to meet with Liz and go through yours and what I know, and, and help her pick out the twenty that we start with.
Thank you. And I, I would suggest, any of the council members-
Yeah, if anybody knows anybody on the list, that's-
They know of one, uh, where the-
Joel.
The new owner, excuse me, the new owner, they're not, uh, running the tire repair place, or the cabinet place, or whatever it is, um, that, that information's also for Lori, that can go to Liz.
All right, so we will have all the council send that in, and I will then sit down with Liz and go through and pick twenty of them. So if any of the council knows anybody on this list that, uh, isn't actively using their CUP anymore, if you would forward that to, uh, Lori.
If they're not actively using it, if that's what you want to know?
Yeah. We're starting with the ones where they're not actively using, so we can potentially get those off the list.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
Well, some are like so obvious, like Harvey Greenberg, I mean-
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer, we wouldn't have to-
Well, it's a no-brainer to us, but it might not be to everyone else. I mean, that one is, but there's other ones on there like that.
Oh, definitely.
So, Jason, there's a few people on there where we know them personally, and like, oh, we know that guy's not in there anymore, or whatever.
Yeah, been around a long time.
So if you know someone on there who's not doing their thing anymore, just email Lori and say, this person, I know they're not doing their CUP anymore, or IUP.
So at this point, until we get that done, we don't have a, a motion to move this forward, so. Any other discussion on that? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on then. Again, Lori, thank you for the cleanup and the updates.
Yes.
Anybody have anything, uh, subsequent to our work session last week that they need to discuss on the fee schedule?
Well, Mayor and Council, I just want to let you know that I took into consideration all the discussion last Thursday and made the changes on the fee schedule, so what you have before you now should be the-
Updated.
-most current, updated. Uh, if there's anything you see that still is standing out, we can certainly discuss that.
Appreciate it. Best this has looked in years.
Yes, very nice.
I will accept a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the fee schedule as presented, the corrections from this strike.
We have a motion from Councilmember Blake.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Councilmember Alders. Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm quit, I'm looking at it. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to see if indeed those changes I had requested were on there, and it looks like they are, so I'm all in favor. Great job!
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, took me a while to get there.
Councilmember Rainville?
I'm sorry, you're cutting out.
Councilmember Rainville?
Um, I, you know, I, I stated this is the workshop session, uh, you had Lori's an excellent job on it, uh, it's the most professional this document has ever looked, and it's the easiest to read, um, that we've ever had, and so again, I thank Lori for her work on that, and I thank her for, um, accepting the suggestion, um, that I had on it, um, however, there's still one that is there that, because I have a special interest, I, I cannot support the fee schedules, and it's the one on Page Eleven, where we're still operating a city for any cost associated with an administrative hearing over three hundred, that if the costs are in, coming in over three hundred dollars, even if we prevail. And, and I can't vote for something that opens up the city and the residents by making them responsible for costs over that three hundred dollars of maximum, even in the case that we prevail and, 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 on the case.
Yeah, I, I thought at the work session, we struck the not to exceed.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
So with that, if we strike not to exceed three hundred on Page Eleven, Councilmember Blake, would you approve that amendment to your motion?
I approve that amendment, that we strike not to exceed three hundred dollars.
And Councilmember Alders, your second still stand?
Second.
All right, so, Councilmember Rainville, thank you for pointing that out, we did, uh, discuss that at the work session.
Yep.
And so with that stricken, not to exceed three hundred, and the motion made to approve with that amendment, is there any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of, uh, approving the fee schedule as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Good job, Lori.
Thank you very much. All right, employee personnel policy. Um, we had three things at the work session that we still need to work out, uh, discussion and investigation of EMB versus short-term and long-term disability, formation of a personnel committee, and authorized expenditures without council's approval. Uh, one option would be to approve the, this draft of the personnel policies as presented, with the understanding those three items still need to be addressed, um, or move the whole thing down the road until those three things are addressed. How do we want to handle it?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Uh, I would, I, I would, uh, move that we, uh, approve them as presented, with the understanding that we do have to work on those couple items.
All right, so is that your motion?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve, uh, understanding those three items still need to be addressed.
Repeat the items you're addressing.
Uh, EMB, emergency medical benefits, uh, versus short-term, long-term disability, uh, formation of a personnel committee, and identifying appropriate authorized expenditures that staff can, uh, spend without previous council approval.
Do we have that in there already?
We, we have a placeholder. It's never, it's never been resolved.
Okay, so these things haven't been resolved?
There's, there's two different things that conflict that have to be corrected. Yes, those have to be resolved.
So what, we're tabling these, when do we plan on discussing?
So every, everything else, we would be approving, everything but those three tonight, and then we'll put those on a future, future work session.
So one more time on the three, EMD versus short, long-term disability?
Yep, formation of a personnel committee.
Personnel committee.
And authorized expenditures.
Authorized expenditures, like, i.e., who can spend what?
Who can spend what without council approval.
And how much? Okay, and what's the personnel committee?
Personnel committee would be two of our council members to resolve things. Right now, it came up, uh, in the, uh, the policies we just approved for the Fire Department, and, and when it elevates to a certain point, um, it, it goes to a personnel committee. Right now, the policy says it goes to the mayor, so if it involves the chief, it goes to the mayor. If it involves somebody below the chief, but they don't like what the chief said, it goes to the mayor, and I'm recommending that we actually form a, uh, personnel committee, so that if there are, um, staff issues that need to be resolved, we can, we can bring the two council members together without having to have an open meeting.
Okay.
And so it would be resolving that issue and setting up, uh, the authorizations, rights, and responsibilities under those three areas. One would be investigating the advantage to the city and the employees, EMD versus short-term and long-term disability. Personnel committee would need to be structured, put in place, and then authorized expenditures, we'd have to investigate and put a structure in place.
So does this personnel committee make a final decision, or does this come back to the council, or how does it work?
They-
That's what has to be-
That's what has to be determined.
Oh, okay, okay.
It could be any way we want to set it up.
Okay.
It de, it depends on probably the type of infraction they're dealing with.
Okay.
But if, if it comes to dismissal, or disciplined, it would be dismissal, it'd have to come back to the council, because that's a council responsibility, so. So with that in mind, were those three things still needing action, um, but approving the rest of what's presented here? I'll accept a motion. Good night, Mary, I guess you made the motion?
Yes, you did.
Lori, you're good with this? And these are typically your people, right? This is, you're gonna be executing and enforcing these policies, so with those three, you're good with it?
Uh, Councilmember Alders, yes, I'm, I'm fine with approving what's currently there, the three items on the list, I would be wanting to discuss them.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second.
A seconded.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I have one comment.
Councilmember Blake?
I don't completely understand all this, but if this, these are things that are involving the employees, should we have input from them on some of these things?
Well, that's what Lori is saying, that she'll have the input. There's fairly limited, you know, when it comes to expenditures, you know, there will be an identification of, can Joe and Eric spend? Because we don't have a large staff, it's really going to be what Lori does, and what Lori's authorization is, and right now, there's authorization for council members to spend without council approval. But I would certainly expect that Lori, because all these three things do affect, that's why she wants to talk about being involved in that discussion. But I would expect that she'll represent the staff that reports to her in these areas.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
Sometimes I think just out of good communication between the staff and the council, that maybe us talking with them about, like this one, to me, would be a big one. EMB, changing that over, so that they hear, they know that we're hearing their voice on this, that it might be just good, I don't know, good relationships.
Good policy.
Good policy for us to communicate clearly and listen to what they say, and us then share what we're thinking, so they know where we're coming from. It doesn't all fall on Lori, but they can hear where we're coming from.
I think we need to even discuss whether it makes sense before we open it up to a wider audience, because...
Maybe we're not going to change anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if it doesn't make economic sense, it, you know, it's one of those things, why get people worked up about it and say, "Oh, we're not doing it anyway?"
Sure.
But so right now, we're saying, you know, what are the structures? Councilmember Rainville? Councilmember Rainville?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Blake, yeah, EMB is staying as is. We can have that conversation with our back-end employee input. These policies, as they are in front of us, were put to staff a couple years back. Now, we have some new staff in there, but when I brought this up again last fall, or the end of last year, I also asked that Lori commit this to, or provide this to staff for their input. So, and I'm assuming that that was done, and I've not had any input back from anybody as far as employees. And Lori went out on Thursday, or Tuesday, and then yesterday, that she's comfortable in that, as far as what's being approved, and that the understanding we do have to work on a couple things.
And then, you know, we'll certainly defer to Lori when she wants to involve other staff as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if we're not changing some of this stuff, you're right, it's mute. So I'm thinking anybody all wronged up, you're right.
Well, Mayor and Council, I did present this to staff when it was originally brought out, so they had time to review it. My concern is if we're removing something like the medical benefit, that's a benefit to our staff, and replacing it with short-term or long-term disability, that's not a benefit. So that would be something that I would definitely want to discuss. Any removal or changes to what they've already looked at, I definitely want to have time to discuss that with them.
Yeah, because it's still a benefit, but it's a different type of benefit, right?
Yeah. The EMB, and that's where we would talk about. Here's what EMB is, here's why it's advantageous to the council, to the staff, here's why it's not advantageous.
Definitely, it's definitely a big change though, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't cost them anymore, but the short-term disability has a different structure than EMB has.
Absolutely, it's a totally different setup.
But that's why we have the discussion. That's why it was brought to our attention many years ago, as I said last week, both by the auditor and by our insurance agent. You know, there are exposures there, so we can have that discussion and say, what's the advantage either way? But for right now, we'll go with the rest of the policy as presented, and we'll deal with these in the future.
Okay.
So we did vote on that?
Yes.
So we are now down to, good of the council, and that's... Joel, you want to bring up the logo? While he's doing that, I did want to, for those of you that know the Duchesnes, prominent family around here for many years, Leo dug many of the septic systems in town here, but they lived on the farmstead where Aings are now living, and Muriel passed away recently, so, in February here. So if any of you know the Duchesnes, the matriarch has passed away here. All right, so Mary, you're going to have to use your imagination here. You've probably seen these images before, but Joel is showing logos that we had gone through before.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
By chance, does Joel have it on his computer, and he can email it to me?
She's seen it all before. You've seen all the logos before, we're just going to bring Jason up to speed.
All right, okay.
We're trying to vote on one, we never did resolve this, huh?
I thought we had, but...
I guess not. This is for the logo on paper and stuff like that? This isn't to put out on the front of the building, right?
Yes, so I thought, well, the mayor and I talked about it, and we thought maybe if we could get back to square one and just decide on the logo itself, and leave all the city signage out of this now, and just try and focus on the logo itself. Trying to get straight, but you know?
I'm good.
We don't need it, it's fine, we can read it. What was the one that a lot of people liked, Joel, do you remember?
Would you give me a minute to get set up, lady?
Oh, I thought you were set up.
No, not done yet. All right, so back in the day, we had a sign out front which is slated to be removed, and we were trying to make a logo and incorporate it into the sign out front. Before this, Jason, there were many steps and sketches of other designs, and we had gone in this direction. And one of the things was, you see this little barn logo right here, Jason?
Yep.
Nowhere I'm pointing, Jason. See this little barn logo right here?
Yep.
So this is my attempt to take this and kind of buff it up and modernize it. So, that's kind of where we...
And it's also something we don't own the copyright to.
Yeah, so this is clip art from probably my...
I actually got that on a matchbook in Times Square.
So this was another idea that we had come up with, these different barns, all of which we could get rights to, to these clip arts, and then use that as well. So then we moved kind of into this direction here, where we started to incorporate the text into the logo a little bit differently. The council had said, "We want the word 'city of' in there." So I started playing around and showing them different ways we could put the word "city of" in the logo, started playing around with different fonts. Not everyone was hip with that font, especially right here with that bar going there. So we started to migrate toward this one here. I, at that point, generated, I mean, I generated this logo here, so it would be completely under the city's control. We own the copyright to it, so there's no issues there. The final step where we had been was around here. We had said we kind of liked these pokes at the end, then we decided maybe not the pokes. We decided maybe these little banner thingies, but that presents an issue with here, the text popping out of the banner, so then I enclosed it. We discussed different color combinations, like here and here. This is where we kind of ended up last. So I'm just gonna, the two basic ones that I really think we should go in the direction of are these two here, which the two differences are, is this barn and the silo have completely white lines?
Sorry about that.
All right, so the difference between these two logos is the barn has white lines, and so does the silo. And then down here, I incorporated black lines. So I thought the illustration, you know, really was a tie between these two, but I think I'm leaning toward this one here.
Yeah, I like that one too.
They're really close, I don't know, I just thought, like up in here with the white being the outline, the, what are these things called again?
Cupolas.
The cupolas get a little bit lost, whereas when I darken them up with actual outline, they get a little more pronounced, but, I mean, I could go...
I kind of like the white lines, it's because it's not such a big...
What's going to look better on a t-shirt?
I like dark ones.
The one with the white lines has actually, I don't know, they're both going to be fine. I'm torn between the two, I've been looking at the two, and I'm like, man, they're so close.
I think the white one just breaks up all that black. I mean, you look at that lower part, it looks like more smudge than... But yeah, I think that's what we've gotten down to. What was the question with the scroll down to the lower left? Why was that a problem?
I don't like it, that's why it's a problem. I think at this point, it starts to get busy. So when I do research into city logos, they're about as simplistic as gets. Ours is actually quite...
Complex.
Complex for a city logo, and when you get down into here, it's getting too complex. The reason why I feel this one is still palatable is because I was really going for updating our Malvin logo, which we've had for so long, which has our cute little barn, which has been on our sign, which I think is recognizable to the city. So when they see this logo, maybe they'll go, "Oh, it harkens back to the day when we had that," or something like this. So, my proposal is one of the two on the right, however, we have various opinions in the House.
Well, we can't go with the bottom one on the right, because that looks like Green Bay Packer colors.
Looks like what? Green Bay Packer.
Lori, which one do you like?
Thank you for asking. I used to own an embroidery and screen printing company and made logos, so my recommendation, whichever logo you choose, is to be simple and clean, so it can be embroidered, screen printed.
Right.
You can put it on a shirt. What the question asked of, "How is it going to look on a shirt?", perfect question, because that's what you want to find.
Will these work on a shirt?
Yes. I would say my favorite would be the middle one on the right.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
That's mine too. I think it's cleaner looking.
It looks richer.
Uh-huh. The one with all of that silo, with all that white, I don't know, for me, it looks like somebody's just dividing it up like a cake or something. But, quite frankly, I'd be happy with either one. There's a lot of white shirts, and you got a white outline on a white shirt, that sort of fades.
Well, not very many people actually wear white, so once this goes on a color, some, you know, we would either have to put white in those areas. For embroidery, that'd be easy, we'd just put white in those areas. If it's going to be screen print, some of those areas that are white will have to be the shirt showing through.
It'll just wash out, right? Yeah, it would just be...
Yeah, so if it's a yellow shirt, it'll just have yellow windows.
Okay.
But we can add white in there to address those things, or the design can be simplified down. I mean, this is my industry, Jason, so I would just knock the colors down per how many... Let's say if a customer comes in and they bring in a six-color logo, they'd say, "Well, how much is it going to cost? That's always an issue, we charge for color." So I say to them, "I can do all six, or five, or four, or three, I'll just adjust your logos down to accommodate how many you want to pay for." But for embroidery, we can do the full gamut of color. That's just how embroidery works, you don't charge for color, but in my industry, for embroidery, but for screen print, you do charge for color.
Okay.
So if this were for a city staff, it could be knocked down to just black and red.
Okay, it's 10 to 9, let's make a call. Which one you want to go with?
Well, the one on the right is a little more rich.
Sounds like the one on the right is more popular. Let's go with that.
I'll vote for the one on the right, but I'm happy either way, I truly am.
Jason? I like it, I think the one on the right's fine. All right, you did an awesome job.
Let's go with the one on the right.
If Lori believes we can put them on a hat, then we're good.
Nice job, Joel. Maybe Lori, you can go back in business and make a bunch of these for us.
All right, if we adjourn right now, we are right on schedule.
Good job, Mayor Pealon.
So, did we skip over the consent agenda? Do we need to approve those RCA's or not?
No, we approved the consent agenda.
Oh, we approved everything at once?
We worked on those through the...
That's what I missed last week.
Last week.
Gotcha, perfect.
So, I move to adjourn.
A second.
We are adjourned. Right on time.
Aye.
Aye.